Yes, thanks to both of them. He thought you were my daughter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year to everybody, happy for coming out. I'd like to call our regular board meeting for Monday, January ninth, 2023 to order. Please rise.
We'd like to have a moment of silence for those who've lost their lives as firefighters over this past month. There's been ten. And as we look back over last year, a total of ninety-six across the nation. So let's have a moment of silence and honor for those. Dear God, we give honor to those who have made ultimate sacrifice in the service of others to care and watch over and protect them. And Lord, we pray that you be with the families of those that are going through grieving, that you will just give them comfort and strength. And as always, we pray for protection for all the firefighters here in Benita, that you'll watch over them, protect them from harm, be with their families as they're separated many times, watch over them. Thank you for the opportunity and the privilege to meet and the ability to share and lead and discuss things that impact the lives of others. We pray you might grant wisdom to those that lead. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, I'd like to introduce and welcome Commissioner Hugo. Welcome to the.
Thank you.
Nice to have you with us. Congratulations.
Thank you, I'm excited to be here.
First order of business, any public comment on agenda items this evening? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December fifth, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One motion for the financials of December twenty twenty-two, current expenditures and ACH payments, the acknowledgement of financial reports, the acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts, and purchase orders over $10,000.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Commissioners, business. We can call on anybody individually, or does anybody have anything they want to talk about? No, okay. I just, you know, I keep reiterating how strong a team that we've had through all of this, this last quarter of the year. It's still, you know, it's still admirable, and I'm proud to be part of this team. Presentations for years of service.
All right, tonight, looking across the audience, the only one we have here tonight is Commissioner Maturro, who has been here for five years, five long years, as we put it.
I didn't have any gray hair when I started.
Exactly.
His beard was black when he started.
Exactly. I just like to.
So was mine.
Yeah. I had a full head of, I'm only thirty-five, I had a full head of hair and everything, so it's done. You know, at this time, it's been five years since Commissioner Maturro walked through the doors and was appointed, then re-elected to his position. And I can say, every one of you always lend an ear to either administration or to the men and women at the Fire Department, and Commissioner Maturro is no different. He goes to the conferences, he's a wealth of knowledge, brings something to the table every time we discuss it. With his law enforcement background, it's something different, you know? Each one of you brings something, either business, business, now Commissioner Hugo's business, and also a love for the fire service. You know, with Commissioner Maturro, with the law enforcement background, when we were looking at, dare I say it, and I hate to say it, that, you know, when we were looking at ballistic vests and helmets, you know, he is a wealth of knowledge in getting that across the finish line and telling us what we should and shouldn't have. So this time, I'd like to congratulate you on five years of service, and as we know now, four more years, so hopefully, we just need one more year and get you a ten-year pin.
Thank you very much. I'm really, I just want to say, I'm really proud to be associated with the board and the Fire District and the men and women that make everything possible and their support. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Peter.
Yeah.
The next five-year pin we have is firefighter Bryant Bruzos. You know, Bryant came to us five years ago, obviously, since this is five-year pin, but we, he had some time on the service, and we sold him from Immaculate. And he's come up through the ranks, and he's one of our new acting lieutenants, and he's fallen into the role quite well. You know, his officers say he's a go-to guy, he's dependable, knowledgeable. We're still working on the mustache thing, he tried to grow a mustache this time, this time last year, and it was a bone of contention at one point. Yeah, maybe five more years. Sometimes the stash will show some wisdom, but not so much in his, his wisdom's in his head, not in the mustache. But he's done a heck of a job for us, and, you know, he's an up-and-comer, and I'd like to congratulate him on five years of service. You're very welcome.
Congratulations, many more.
Chairman, point of personal privilege, I want to go off script a little bit, I got two more presentations that.
Absolutely.
That popped up, and I feel warrant at least saying something. So, you know, for years, we've had a CERT team, which is the, it's the, you know, our CERT team, we have in different neighborhoods, we have one in Palmeira, we have one in Village Walk, Citrus Park, you know, it's our citizens' emergency response team, we have one in Pelican Landing, we have roughly about three, three hundred and fifty personnel in this CERT team that we have, and we utilize them during hurricanes, we've utilized them during, we do live fire training out here, we have them come in and do the blood pressures for everybody. So we've had this for about twelve to fifteen years, based on my recollection. Like I said, I've been up here in the administrative ranks for the last ten, and I know we've had it since ten. So tonight, it, I guess it pains me, but it also is proud of me to, to say congratulations and thank you for your years of service to Richard Pepe. He's been our CERT captain in Palmeira for twelve years. He's finally decided to hang up his green helmet and his backpack, and I would just like to say thank you and congratulate you, and welcome to new one.
Got to get your picture taken.
Stand next to the chief.
I just want to congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank you all.
I've got much more on it than I gave you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, real quick, that's, you know, that's what the citizens of Benita Springs is all about. Like I said, he's been on the CERT team for twelve years, you know, come here, got the training, and was one of our go-to persons in Palmeira. So if something were to happen, either whether it be a tornado, hurricane, we would call those CERT captains, and they would be able to tell us who in the neighborhood, you know, is still there and what we can do for them.
Chief, I might add, that's how I got my start here with the district, was as a CERT captain.
The next thing, another point of personal privilege, as you guys, as the board knows and as the citizens know, obviously Hurricane Ian did a little number on us, and more so in southwest Florida. And as the South Geographical EOC, we open our doors to everybody. And by everybody, I mean the IFF, the tunnels, the towers, we've opened them to everybody. So tonight, I think President Roy Brown would like to come up and say a few words and thank us for that. So I'd like to introduce President Brown.
Good evening, everyone, Roy Brown, Local 3444, President. So thank you very much, Chief, for this point of personal privilege, appreciate it. So, you know, everyone, everyone kind of was experiencing Hurricane Ian and all the devastation that occurred. And after everything was kind of said and done, the IFF and the FPF kind of came down here after we were doing some more check distribution to affected members. And, you know, they wanted to give some thanks to not only the department, but the union for their assistance with allowing them to kind of come down. So it was a coordinated effort between the union and the chief, and he opened up the doors, as he, you know, just stated, and it was tremendous help. They were able to kind of come down here and set up their operations, we were able to help out, you know, members with their tarps, for their roofs, and anything they needed, you know, we were trying to be there for anyone that was a part of the organization. So they, they made a very nice plaque that they presented, and Chief was at a, I think, a meeting when they kind of came down, so I wanted to kind of bring it in, really just to kind of get a picture with the union and the chief, and maybe something where we can hang it up along the wall somewhere.
Yep.
So again, I just want to thank you, thank the district for kind of opening up their doors and allowing the union and the international and the FPF to essentially, you know, get going and get work started. So thank you very much, and I appreciate everything you did for us.
Okay, you know, it's, like I said, and I'm going to steal a phrase from Chief Carmine Mercino, you know, every time I talk to him about things that we do, and I feel this way with the FPF and the IFF, you know, it's one team, it's for the greater good, it's for the membership of Lee County, southwest Florida, you know, and that's what they did. We had the room, you know, we gave them our training room out back, and they, what they did to the membership and for everybody, even us here, I mean, when they were, had downtimes, they pitched in and helped us in the South EOC, so, you know, the appreciation goes both ways.
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
And then while, while we have the rest of the executive board up here, I do want to introduce everyone, Tom Harrison, he's the union's new vice president, so we want to welcome him on board. And then for anyone here that don't know other members, we have Jordan Sauerwall, and he's our treasurer, we have Declan Allison, he's our secretary.
Suck it in.
They're going to have to use, they're going to have to use the pan mode. Hey, Roy, nice job.
Stuff like that is really nice to hear. So thanks, everybody involved.
And that's all we have for presentations, sir.
What about the twenty-year?
They're not here.
Okay.
I'll give them to them on shift when I see them.
Okay. We can take a short break, if anybody wants to leave, now that the awards have happened, you're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if anybody would like to leave, now would be the time. Okay, call the meeting back to order. I need a motion for, to approve the disposals report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody have anything under old business? Seeing none? Under new business, we need to, I'm sure everybody's looked over the chief's contract, I need a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I need a motion for the budget transfer one and two, to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Sir.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we need the approval of the Station 27 closing statement, the closing is tomorrow.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, Chief, I'm sure you've got a few things you want to talk about, so you're up.
So, yeah, first of all, thank you for the contract, it was negotiated.
Thank you, you've done a remarkable job.
From the chairman, a couple of things I have on there, what's going on here locally at the Fire Department, and what's going on with Station 27, as you know. First things first, business after hours, through the chamber, they have two business after hours, one was the postponement from the Botanical Gardens down Naples, has been rescheduled for January the eleventh down at the Botanical Gardens, if anybody would like to go, know it's short notice, but they just put it out here in the last couple of days, so that's the eleventh, four to six. The other one they have is January twenty-sixth, which is one, I think, that most of you would probably want to go to, that is at Don Roma's here in Benita Springs.
Yes.
So if you'd like to go to that, just let us know, let Anna Marie know, or myself know. Obviously, as it gets closer, we'll throw out another text, but if you know now, if you know now, just let Anna Marie know.
We got three, Tommy's going to go?
I'll go.
All of us, makes it easy, no phone calls.
The other thing, I don't know if to call it good, bad, or indifferent, call volume is about up ten point seven percent, final numbers was eighty-eight hundred and thirty-seven calls, as opposed to seventy-nine hundred last year, and some change.
Number again?
Eight-eight-three-seven.
You attribute that to anything specific?
I know during, during Hurricane Ian, our call volume was up, but only for about a two-week time, it was up about thirty percent, thirty to sixty, depending on it, ramped up, plateaued, then ramped back down.
The last two weeks has been nothing.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's just, you know, I can attribute some of it to, you know, the end of COVID, so this time last year, everybody was starting to feel a little bit more comfortable with going to hospitals because of COVID, so that, I think the call volume started out the year, this time last year started out a little with a bang, unfortunately, and, you know, then with Ian and the few calls after that, we did quite a few, like I said, for that, two weeks after Ian, our call volume was up about sixty percent, then it trickled down to about thirty percent. Now, it's still a little high, it's about ten to twelve percent higher than what we've seen this time last year.
Are our guys running more COVID calls now?
Not lately, not that we've, not that they've documented, I know the hospital is up, but we still have our precautions out there where if it's breathing difficulty or any type of respiratory, there to wear masks and goggles.
Okay, and no problem with supplies or anything?
Nope, not on, not on medical supplies or anything like that.
Thank you.
The next thing is, as you know, myself and Chairman Lohan will be going to Jacksonville on Wednesday for FASD for legislative issues and the quarterly meeting, it's in Jacksonville, it's Tuesday and, or I'm sorry, Thursday and Friday, so we'll be there on Thursday and Friday, leaving on Wednesday. The following week, we're sending ten, nine personnel to Fire Rescue East, which is in Daytona, for training and state EMS meetings, and she's not in here, but Kelly Wilson has been our training captain, has been selected to be part of the ALS team, not the team, as more as the, what would you call it? Assessor's and advisory. So she's helping set up the ALS competition, for, I think they have fourteen teams this year going through it, she's one of the assessors on that. We started today, if you came in early, we started today with the testing for our new hires. When we started, we got over a hundred applicants after they were scrubbed and looked at, we had a hundred of them accept to be tested, and so we started that today. So we're going to do that the next three days, we're doing twenty-five at a session, we bought a can test, and so within that, we charged them to take the test, and they came in and started to process. We are doing the physical agility part on the twenty-eighth of January, and then the interview portion with our person and internal personnel on the sixth, starting on the sixth of February. And that will run for three days, and then that panel will make recommendations, and I will look at it, and then I will do interviews after that for the hiring four to five personnel, just, we don't know yet if we're going to go with four or five, depending on how the internal promotions go with the training captain. Assistant Chief Broad and myself talked to Offshore Performance about the motors that we got on a grant for the boat, so they've been ordered, they're talking a four to six week lead time, so they will be in about four to six weeks. So basically, we got two brand-new two-twenty-fives, having them swapped out with new props, all the work done out the door for twenty-nine thousand, so it's going to cost us fifteen thousand for two new motors on that. Also, real quick, I just bring it up, it's still a month away, and we'll have conversation, but February tenth, the chamber is starting a, or trying to do an inaugural clay shooting, it's down, down in south blocks of, south blocks of the Everglades, it's west on ninety-two on US forty-one. So if anybody's interested in, just contact me, and we'll go over it and see if we can get a team of four. If not, it's not a big deal, it's something new that they're trying to do, along with the golf tournament that they have, not everybody golfs. And lastly, Station 27 update, moving forward, we have the permits already for the station to go, we've talked with the city, we, they've allotted us right at a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to get in there with our contractor, we've talked about it, we think, we know we can get in for under the hundred and twelve thousand. Originally, when we did the first remodel of the space in two thousand and sixteen, it was right at a hundred and fifty-eight, but that was with flooring, that was with the cheeky hut and the lift-out back, so those things, we feel are still in good shape, the flooring is still fine, the bathroom's probably twenty percent complete already with the tile on the floor that wasn't damaged, so we feel we can make it. We also have, the AC contractors already ordered the AC stuff, so all that stuff is all separate, so we're moving forward with it. As we do know, there was fuel on the dock itself, we've had the fuel company who does the maintenance on it come out and look at it, they've recommended doing a pressure test on the actual above-ground tank, they think it's going to pass, so we're moving forward with that, so we don't have to pull the boat for fuel or go to a marina, because marinas sometimes aren't open, let's use Benita Bay closes at five, New Year's Day they were closed, so if we needed fuel, we would have to pull the boat, which is, sometimes right now, it's not beneficial, because right now, the only ramp that is open is Imperial River, and we can maybe get it out of Pelican Landing for the time being. We've been told that Carl Johnson's going to be at least eight to ten months, if not a year, before it is, it is open to the public. And the next thing is, is that the sprinkler system in the, in the, our units were damaged, so I have a quote to fix that, or for a little bit more, we're going to sprinkle the whole building, since we will own it.
That's in addition to the hundred and twelve thousand?
Yes, that's in addition. And that's, it's fourteen, I believe it was fourteen thousand to repair what we had, and another eighty-five, eighty-six hundred to do the whole building, not knowing what we're going to do with the rest of the building, i.e., we may turn some of them into bunk rooms, we may put bunker gear in it, we may do that, it's more beneficial to sprinkle the whole building at the time. And that's where we're at on Station 27, and that's the end of my report. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
They're going to have a weight room?
Yes, yes.
Anybody got anything? Okay, thank you. Thank you for the rest of the reports. My pet peeve is, I see the false alarm calls are up again, pretty significantly, maybe that's storm-related, but.
I think you're going to see more of that, just with the repairs coming in, there's a lot of contractors on site fixing it, and they're going off these days.
Well, I guess as long as they're working at fixing it, but when you see three and four and five calls to the same location, then it starts to be like, fix it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, all right, I'm glad you're taking care of that.
And some of it is backward of parts.
I'm sure, I get that, I totally get that. Public comment, Alex Grant.
Alex Grant, eleven eight fifty-one East Terry Street, I thought I'd just make a suggestion, with Station 27, since you're going to be doing that, now there is, you know, that restaurant is gone. And I was wondering if maybe the Fire Department and the city would cooperate on this, I don't know, an idea, if nobody is going to be in there, maybe it would be nice to make it, you know, we ate there, you and my wife and I, a number of times, so anyway, it would be lovely if we could make a little bit of a sort of a memorial park, or something like that, for victims of the storm, Ian, you know, and maybe we could get the Seminole Indians to put some, you know, like they did over the Fire Station 27, you know, it, just an idea, and I'm tossing this out to you first, I'll toss it out to the city, too, but I thought, you know, it might, might look nice, et cetera, I doubt anybody will be there, you know what I'm saying?
Just a, just a comment on that, Alex, even though it's going through as one parcel, that's actually two parcels.
Oh, it is.
It's two parcels, the restaurant is on a separate parcel from the station.
Okay.
We had a first right of refusal on the total property, which we have exercised, but we're going to sell that, the rest of that, to offset the, the cost to the taxpayers.
Maybe the city or the, I'm just.
Well, I'm just, the long-term plan, I don't know whether that's going to be six months or a year, a year and a half.
Yeah, 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 I realize that.
We actually have had people chasing us down to buy what's there, what's left, so we're not going to have any problem getting our money back, but we just had to buy the whole package, but it's two parcels.
Well, I just thought I'd throw that out.
Chief, might want to add something?
Yeah, the only thing, other thing that I would add to it is, you know, the city and the Fire Department have been spoken about in social media quite a bit lately, you know, that we're going to tear it down, we have no intentions of tearing it down. Our intentions right now are to get us back in the fire rescue business out of that parcel, and then either put out an RFQ for a company to see what is the best use of that, and if the best use is to put a restaurant in that, then that's what it will be, if the best use is to do something else, I mean, that's what it is, and again.
We've got eighteen docks there, too.
Yeah, there's eighteen, there's eighteen, it's a very, and, you know, our thought process right now, you know, is anywhere from getting our own appraisal, similar to what Coconut Jacks and, and docks did, to where that FEMA level is a little bit higher, and then that makes it more valuable to a restaurant to come in there and remodel it.
Yeah.
To be honest, we've been there since two thousand and sixteen, we've never had an issue with the restaurant being there, so if a restaurant goes back in there tomorrow, because that's the best use of it, then great.
Yeah.
Our guys are rooting for Hooters, but I don't know.
You know, put an idea in their head.
Yeah.
Just an idea.
Thank you.
And the other thing is, I have, I read this article on the fusion experiment for energy using the atoms peacefully, and if anybody's interested in that, I have that.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thanks for coming.